That brings us to the consent agenda. There's no changes. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Cohen's made a motion, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to all business. Committee meeting liaison. Counsel update?
This is the last meeting on the month.
Excuse me. What was that?
Do you have any go?
Yes, sir.
Start with you, Marcus.
Yeah. I had the opportunity to attend the last CRO TPO meeting as the alternate. It wasn't much. There was just some old business moving of funding and so forth that occurred. There was some concern in terms of the quorum not being able to, for the June meeting, I think. There wasn't a quorum, but I think they addressed that. One of the things that I think that we have to, as a group, look forward to and work with Patrick on is the upcoming period for projects that we can submit as a town. What projects can we get on there? I think that's where we have to kind of prioritize some of the things that we need, Patrick, from that standpoint. But other than that, there wasn't too much other discussion. It's just really old items moving, funding from different pools to another that I think everybody was in unanimous agreement on at that meeting. Anything you want to add, Patrick? Patrick was in attendance too as well.
Yeah, I do agree with Councilmember McIntyre. We have to be selective about the project, especially because we have so many of them going to be ongoing soon, like Chestnut Parkway, Phase Three, the Gribble Roundabout. One of the projects that I will put first priority on would be the signalized intersection up here, Indian Trail and Matthews Indian Trail. I did communicate with Scott Cole. He agreed that DOT will perform a signalized analysis to the intersection when school starts. And if that intersection will end up having a level of Service F. And then he said they will try to find the funding from a program out there that they have. And probably it'll be a bit of local contribution. But he did mention that it will be, there will be a significant impact on that intersection. A building might be taken out. So there are two options out there, either a roundabout or full movement signalized intersection. But either one of them will have some impact on one or two properties at that intersection. So, Mr. McIntyre, I do agree that we need to prioritize and be selective about the funding and the location. Thank you.
Any other committee updates?
I missed the last committee.
Okay. That's understandable.
So, I don't know.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no objection, we'll move on to the next item. That would be Board Committee, new applicant appointment. Did we have one? Okay. Who's going to take the lead? Mr. Cohen?
I'll make a motion to approve nominee Margaret Fielding to the Transportation Committee, Seat Four, term expiration date of 6/30/21.
If there's no discussion, counsel, Mr. Cohen's made a motion for Margaret Fielding. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Motion carries.
Now, you can report back to us all the good stuff you can find out at the transportation.
Okay. That brings us to the next. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, Item C, PIR inquiries. That's Mr. Parks, Mr. Sadek. Who'd like to take the lead on this?
Way back in a previous meeting, council requested that anytime we run into some PIRs to bring it before your attend. A meeting back, council requested that staff come back and report on any PIRs that we received. And usually when we receive them, Michael handles all PIR, working with our attorney and myself. So I'm going to turn it to Michael to elaborate on what we received.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Manager and Counsel. One of the things I do want to address really quickly, and because we talk about this, you know, all the time now, is that we receive a number of different requests. You know, when we talk about PIRs, that is a specific request for documents, but that doesn't include the dozens of requests we get every week in every department for general information. You know, every department, nearly every day, is fielding these questions, is working with residents, trying to get them answers. So those aren't the things that we're talking about here. You know, I don't want people to think that we're not answering those questions, and we want people to continue to come to us through calls, emails. You can submit questions through our website and all of our social media pages, and we get back to those pretty quickly. What we're talking about more with PIRs, and we had a number of them in the past week, are those document requests. Most of them are real quick. We have two in the past week for planning-related documents that are typically related to someone's property or a nearby property or purchase. Where the majority of our time is spent is really on PIR requests from fewer than four individuals in our community. And I would say that this easily takes up more than half of our time that we spend on PIR requests. In fact, at one point last year when I looked, more than 25% of our PIRs that we had received that year had come from one specific individual. So it's important for people to understand that when we talk about this, we really are talking about fewer than five people that are taking up so much of our time and taxpayer funds on these issues. When the problem arises, it's not because we aren't providing these documents, because we always do. It's because they don't believe our answer. What they are looking for is content for their Facebook pages. And we provide that information, and they use it as they see fit, and they don't like the answer, and they come back for more. We have to decide, how do we handle those requests? How do we provide this information while taking in the mindset that we have 40,000 other residents that are relying on us to deal with all the projects that you see us talking about tonight? So please, I just want people to know that when we talk about PIRs, we're not talking about those questions we get every day. Please keep sending those in. We're really talking about two to four people, and it's important to keep that in mind.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Parks or Mr. Sadek? No. Mr. Sadek, anything else to add?
No, sir. That's all we have. Unless counsel has any questions.
I really don't have any questions. I appreciate what you guys do, and I know it's a tough job to do it. So, and I think most everybody knows. I think ninety, I know everybody in this room knows, you know, who it is and what they're doing. But you guys are doing a good job. Let's just keep the course. Like Mike said, you know, we've got a lot of stuff going on, and a lot of good stuff going on. And, you know, I saw a PR request come in, you know, just one of the last ones in reference to the, I think, $22,000. And I believe counsel pretty much all answered that in the meeting. Basically, what we did is we thought, we gave an estimate of about $5,000 to do it, and then I think Adam, he turned it over, if I'm not mistaken, over to Adam, and Adam just gave a rough estimate. You know, I think they went out and measured it and said, well, you know, without adding up exactly what everything's cost, if you just took the roundabout measurement of that, you come out with about $22,000. And then you get an email, I mean, not email, but a PIR request, and somebody wants a detailed, you know, cost analysis of it. We didn't do a detailed cost analysis of it. We did a rough estimate on it. And basically, in that also was the fact that counsel voted it down anyway. Counsel didn't want to do it under the circumstances that, you know, it was cost, wasn't cost-efficient. It didn't make any sense. The house was, the guy bought the house, nice guy, bought the house, but, you know, the way it was, and he wasn't even the first one to live into it. So all those things, sometimes it's common sense. And I do agree with what you say, Mike. It is about what you can put on a Facebook page, or it is, you know, to be critical of, you know, the different things that counsel can do, you know. Best thing is not read those pages and just stay away from the pages because they're 99% negative. And wouldn't it be nice if we had a page in town instead that told you how negative and how bad everything was? You know, I'm amazed that nobody put anything about what the town saved over a million dollars last year in their budget. You didn't see that mentioned on any of those pages, at least I don't know, don't read it. But that, to me, is phenomenal. That's one of the greatest, you know, feats I would think that the town could do would be save a million dollars in a year on how well it was run. But those are the type of things, as you know, when something good's done, rarely does anybody mention it. But if something is not done well, or somebody can think they can complain about something, they're going to complain about it. And unfortunately, that's just the way, that's just the way life works. That's the way people work. And I'd just say, keep up the good work.
Oh, thank you. And I hesitate to use the term fake news because I hate it so much. But this is one of those scenarios where maybe you should take that to mind. If you're interested in what the town actually is doing, and the truth, you could follow us on Facebook and on Twitter, and go to our website, indiantrail.org.
Yeah. And last thing I'll say, and get off my soapbox, is I think that just about everybody in this room sees how hard the council works. And you see how hard staff works. And we're in this really to make the town better and to make it a better. We're not perfect. We're not always going to make the right decision, but we're going to try to make the right decision, try to do what's best for the town. And, you know, some of these websites just consistently, you know, I've been called a liar, I've been called a cheat, I've been called a hoodooer, I've been called all these different things on these websites. And then I hear people come up here on public comments and get offended by maybe what somebody has said up here. So, you know, I think maybe I've gotten thick-skinned. First of all, I don't think I'm a liar, I don't think I'm a hoodooer, and I don't think I'm any of those things. And, but that's beside the point. Beside the point is, is are we getting things done, and are we doing things for the town? And we are. And we have a tremendous staff and a tremendous, just, the staff gets better all the time. And I can say it because I've been on council the longest, we got the best counsel that we've ever had. And I'm tickled to death. And when I leave next year, we're going to leave it in good hands. And it's important that you guys that are sitting in this room also stand up for the people that are dinner in here. You know, when you see things put on there, let people know what the truth is and really what's happening with the town. And stand up for these guys in the future. It means a lot. It really does. It makes you feel good. So I hope everybody does well. I'll get off my soapbox.
Mr. Sadek?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, if I take just one minute of your time to clarify something?
Yes, sir.
There is a big difference between a detailed cost estimate and a rough cost estimate. A rough cost estimate, and we use the amount of $5,000 to $6,000, and this is how we came up with this number, too, for clarification. We have one construction crew. They could go to the islands, take the concrete, take the asphalt, take the landscape, and they'll do it all. If we're dealing with nine islands, and I'm glad counsel directed us not to do so, you're going to hire a contractor that he's going to have costs, he's going to have insurance, he's going to have a timetable that he has to follow, he's going to hire subcontractors, he's going to have to do traffic control, he's going to take the risk. If you add all that money, you can't compare our local crew anymore that does it all in comparison to somebody that out there to make a profit. So, yes, I could justify the $22,000 that Adam came up with, and we do have four successful engineers on board, and we're capable of doing detailed cost estimates. But counsel didn't request us to do so because they decided not to move with that project. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments, counsel? I will move on to Item D, which was added, the Sagecroft Essex contract. Mr. Sadek?
Yes, sir. Quickly, we did share with counsel way back that we were negotiating with the developer that was interested in purchasing a piece of our property for detention retention and also for sewer easement. I think we did complete the work, we did complete the final phase, and I'm going to turn it to Karen just to elaborate a little bit more about the agreement.
Yes. So we, the town received an offer to acquire 1.5 acres of property near, that we've called the Sagecroft Development. The town is required to go through an upset bid process when it does receive an offer. We have gone through that process. We drafted a resolution authorizing the sale back in June of this year. We advertised the offer, looking for upset bids. We did not, the town did not receive any upset bids. We have the signed agreement in hand today, and what we're asking for counsel to do today is to approve the final contract for the sale of that property. The sale price is $93,750. And again, as Patrick mentioned, it is for a developments, is acquiring that to use the land as their BMP.
Detention, retention, and sewer easement.
Detention, retention, and the sewer easement.
Just for everyone's benefit, can you tell us where that piece of property is actually located?
Adam, what did we use the roadway out there? Were the Faith Wall?
Faith Church Road Extension.
Off of Monroe Road.
The motion that we're asking for is to approve the final draft of the Sagecroft contract in the amount of $93,750.
So moved.
Mr. Cohen's made the motion. All in favor? Motion approved unanimously. Motion carries. Brings us to new business. Item A, Indian Trail Apartment Complex, Approval Impacts on Law Enforcement and Other Services. Captain Cobal, welcome back.
Presentation. So, this is going to be a doozy. Patrick and I were actually here till about 9:30 one night this week. I was trying to hide from him, and I think he was trying to hide from me, but we were working on this. So I've got two different documents here. One of them is a slideshow PowerPoint that we're going to go through that just hits our main points. But then I made sure to provide each one of you guys with a secondary document here that I want you to go home. It'll take a little bit longer to read and go over, but a lot of it is my thoughts and ramblings. But I do think it brings it all full circle to try to put it all back into perspective. But, so one of the recent questions that was asked of me is, and I hope I got the question right, or at least close to it, will an apartment complex create a higher crime rate or a cost for service for us versus a residential project brought before you guys from council? And by apartment complex, you know, town home apartment style, more density, something to put a whole lot tighter in together. So in looking at that, I know that over the past several years, at least the 15 or 16 that I've been up here, it's been a topic that comes up periodically, and here lately it comes up a lot more. It seems like we get a lot more requests, we as the town get a lot more requests to hear from developers who are wanting to put, you know, new apartment areas within our town. And I know there's a struggle sometime from council to sit there and try to balance out, how do we say yea, how do we say nay, and what's the input, and what's the adverse effects on the services that we're providing in town? So you can kind of gauge out whenever you're approving a neighborhood, if the streets are going to come back into town. Those are things that we talk to Todd about and say, hey, what's the future, what's the life expectancy of those roadways, things like that. But when we're talking a whole lot more compact into a parking lot surrounding a building, that's less of a concern about the road maintenance as much as it is, you know, hey, what's that going to do for our other services? What's it going to do for fire? What's it going to do for EMS? So who's got the slideshow here? So just looking at it, and I've learned a lot in myself in the past few years over this whole topic, because I probably have changed my mind two or three times back and forth, but I feel pretty settled where I'm at now. But looking at our town and our vision, and what council wants as a vision, what past councils wanted for a vision from where we're at right now. Ms. Shirley has sat on council before. You had a vision years ago. The town had visions, had plans, had things that we were looking at. I see Dave shaking his head. You've been a part of those meetings, whenever we've been with rocks and been there at, you know, budget retreats and other things over the past few years. We're always looking at that vision. We're planning for what's going to be in the future. And so the decisions that you guys are making now, other people are going to be sitting here in five, six, eight, 10 years, struggling with making future decisions and dealing with the decisions that you're making. So you've been left a bag of rocks, basically, is what I'm telling you, is that other people in the past have given by right to some places to have certain things that have just not come to fruition yet. And it's hard now to make a decision, looking at somebody standing here at this podium in front of you, not knowing what's going to happen with what another council member already gave permission to be done. Because in the long and short of it, we've all got what we feel like is a vision for the town, but a homeowner may think about their town vision and think about their front yard. But an apartment tenant, or potential apartment tenant, is not interested in buying a house. Their vision of the town, they're thinking about coming out the door, not stumbling over the lawnmower, the weed eater in the garage, they're thinking about coming out the door, hopping on their walking path or their bicycle trail, getting over to the Starbucks, getting to the movie theater, getting somewhere convenient, and getting right back. And so you're looking at somebody like a college person that just graduated, trying to get their foot in the door of somewhere outside of mom and dad's house. You're looking at business executives who don't want to invest in long-term. They might be here for two to three years with a startup company. There may be a company that's, you know, just brought them here and starting up, but they're not invested in here, you know, three, four years, but they're moving on. You've got, you know, divorcees, you've got newlyweds, you've got single parents, you've got people that are moving here permanently, bringing their family here, and they've got a house in New Jersey, New York, Arizona that just hasn't sold yet. I use Ronnie Watkins as a good example from us. You know, Ronnie came over to Indian Trail as a deputy years ago after retiring in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and it was about a year and a half before he was able to get his house sold. So while here, he was wanting to look to buy, and he wants to buy, but he was having to deal with the rental because he didn't want to carry that much debt load. And so there's a lot of people, not just, you know, in our profession, but in any profession, that they say, you know what, I'm going to wait until that other house sells before I'm going to go into that much more debt. So you've got a lot of people that could be good neighbors for us, that their vision just might not be exactly what ours might be when we sit here and think about from a house. So one of the things that all of us are probably guilty of thinking about when we initially think about an apartment complex is teenagers loitering, loud music. We're thinking about the single guy on the third floor having a party on Friday night while you've got mom and them trying to sleep with the kids. Got a lot of things that probably get in our heads and get us thinking, but you know, the fact of the matter is, all of those things are in your neighborhoods. There's loud cars in the neighborhood, there's people having parties, there's teenagers having parties while mom and dad's at the beach in the house. You know, those things are going on everywhere. They're just, you know, sometimes seems like there are a lot more of them just because they're in one area, so to say. So looking to answer this question, here's what I kind of did. Started going through and saying, what do we have in place that could help us if we do approve something to be built? And so the first thing that popped in my mind was your UDO in your current, and what people have been approved to build under, and then in the future stuff. So that gives you a little bit of control. But at the end of the day, these developers, they're not living in these apartments, and this is a business. It's a business for the people that are managing the apartment, for the people that own the apartment. So I come in here as a developer, and I want to build a neighborhood, then I'm going out and finding three, four, five, 600 people that are going to come out and invest in my project. If I'm building an apartment, I'm going out and finding either one guy, or LLC, or a group of guys that's going to invest in this business, and they're in it to make money. So I think we've all got to get in the mindset of, from an apartment standpoint, it's a business. And so we want to make sure that these businesses succeed. At least I would think that. You know, they're not going to succeed if the business is sitting empty. So that means the apartment's sitting empty. So it's not going to pay for itself if the apartment's sitting empty. So I try to liken it to, if we've got 10 gas stations in town, and all of a sudden we give the thumbs up and build 20 more gas stations. If there's no more cars than what there were the day before, but now we've got 30 gas stations, somebody's giving away a lot of free coffee, and somebody's giving away a lot of free car washes to get you to come to their gas station, or they're lowering the gas prices. At the end of the day, as an apartment complex owner or manager, coffee's only going to get them so much. I tell you what's going to get them. They're going to run a special, and it's going to be, hey, you've got a criminal history for narcotics conviction, come on in. Hey, your credit's not as good as what we normally want, come on in. Hey, you've got this, come on in. You've got that, they're going to lower their standard. That's not what we want. That's not what you want. That's not what we want for any of our neighborhoods, it's not what we want for any of our apartments or town homes or anything like that. And so we've got to find a, what I feel like is we've got to find a good measure of what's our customer base. What's your potential customer base for people that would want an apartment in Indian Trail? And how can you go about getting to that number? But I think before you ever get there, you're going to have to come up with, how many, you got to get a number on how many have already been by right approved. I don't know that number. I think Patrick Rocks and them know that number. I don't know that. And I've heard some of you suggest, hey, we need to know, we need a map, or we need to know what's approved. But, you know, once we get that number, then it's going to make it a whole lot easier of a road, I think, for us to follow. But what you don't want to have is too much inventory. If you and I were starting a business today, and we were going to sell oil filters for cars, and we went out here and bought a whole tractor and trailer load of oil filters that fit Saab cars, everybody in the room, think about for a minute, can you name off and count on 10 fingers the number of people that own a Saab car? You know, it'd be different if it was a Ford Fusion or something, that there's a high F-150 truck or something. But we wouldn't want to put that much inventory in a certain product unless we had enough people to fill that. So if we get too much of an inventory of apartments in relation to how many people truly would want to come in here, what are we going to have? We're going to have business owners that are struggling, so they're going to lower that standard. And then that's going to cause Chief Lythback here, and Chief Porter, and all the other fire chiefs, and EMS, and me, and everybody else, a lot more of a headache because we've created a haven then. We've created a haven for an apartment manager that says, you know what, I got to keep these apartments full. I know David plays his music real loud, and I know the police are out here all the time, and I know that Shirley complains about it, but I'm not going to evict David because I got to keep this apartment complex full. So what's going to happen is that Shirley's going to say, I'm tired of this. I'm leaving. I'm out. Going somewhere else. Okay. You took a resident that we want as our good neighbor, and she's out, Jerry's going to come along, and he's going to say, well, I just got kicked out of the other place over here because I play my music. Hey, David, turn your radio up, I'll turn mine up, and we'll see how loud we can get them together. And before you know it, we're going to create a safe haven of sorts for bad behavior, if that makes any sense at all. We get back on the slide here, but, you know, I think we all got to ask ourselves, what if somebody came knocking on the door today and wanted to build Disneyland here in town? Want to build a theme park, or want to build a Verizon Amphitheater, or something like that? I don't think anybody would be really second guessing that because they're going to say, hey, look at the economic development impact, and look at all the money it's going to bring, and look at all the revenue it's going to bring. But I think Johnny would agree with me. If we build a Disneyland here, he's going to need some more trucks, he's going to need some more stuff, he's going to need some more people, and the same goes with me. I mean, it's going to be a service impact for us. So, you know, there are certain things that we're willing to accept as leaders of the town, and as visionaries, and as people moving forward, there are certain things that you're willing to accept because you know they're going to have an impact, just for the good of the town, even though it's going to require more service. So I'm not saying that it's wrong to approve an apartment complex or anything like that because, at the end of the day, I think you've got a need for it. But at the end of the day as well, I think you've got to balance that out, if that makes any bit of sense at all. So, going through this one here. So what I did was, I tried to look at calls for service to a random few neighborhoods, and I really randomly just picked these out. As a matter of fact, I let our crime analyst pick some of them out, but we just randomly picked out neighborhoods that exist here in Indian Trail, along with two current existing apartment complexes here in Indian Trail. And to really do this accurately, we've got to look at every residential, we've got to look at every house or every apartment as a residential unit. So to get your numbers, whether you want to compare crime rates or cost for service rates between single-family homes or apartments, you've got to look at them as a residential unit. So I've been guilty of this myself in the past of, if you go to an apartment complex, I turn in that apartment complex, and I might be going over there to 20 different apartments for calls for service. But after a while, I get it in my head, we're always over at X apartment. But after a while, I get it in my head, we're always over at X apartment complex, we're always going to this apartment. But on the different note, if I turn into a neighborhood, I'm going to 20 different houses, I'm not getting it in my mindset that I'm always over at X neighborhood because I've gone to 20 different houses, if that makes sense. So what we did was, we pulled calls for service, and these are for, for law enforcement solely right here, but we pulled calls for service for the villages of Indian Trail, which is an older established neighborhood, Hemby Commons, which is maybe a 20-year, 15, 20-year-old neighborhood, Taylor Glen relatively newer, Bonterra relatively newer in Brook Valley. A whole variance of, I think Bonterra the biggest at 625, down the villages of Indian Trail, and Hemby Commons at 110 residential units per one. And then the calls for service over here in the middle for 16, 17, and 18. Now, I'm going to go ahead and tell you that every bit of this scientific data that you're looking at right now is inherently skewed. It's not even, I, I wouldn't base my paycheck off of the point zero zero decimal on any of it because of this reason. You've got vacant houses, you've got vacant apartments. You've got COPUS here, one of our apartments in 2016 wasn't even online. So some of those calls for service that are there are related to construction, and theft, and trespassing, and things like that, if that makes any sense at all. So really, I'm looking at my current up-to-date 2018, and mid to later part of 2017, if I really want to put COPUS into that group. And then the same goes for the number of houses on here. There, some of these neighborhoods are still being built, and so some of them still got numbers added to them. But I think we can get a close enough picture to get us where we're, get our question answered, what we're looking at. So if we break those down by calls for service per unit, meaning we take the calls for service that year and divide it by the number of units within that, that neighborhood or within that complex, then we come up with that decimal point over here in 17 and 18. And that is, you know, let's take Flagstone in 2017, point six three five calls for service per residential unit. Well, they've got 252 residential units. So point six three five times that we went out there per unit for a law enforcement call for service. And then you start looking that down the list. Now, let me go ahead and throw this out there. A call for service ain't a bad thing. A call for service from David saying, hey, I found a wallet, and, you know, Josh gets over there and picks up the wallet and it belongs to Shirley, and he gets it to you, that's not a bad thing at all. Now, a call for service from David saying, somebody stole my wallet, might be a bad thing, that might be an indication of, of criminal activity going on. So I want to go back to, this is just for service workload, because at the end of the day, we're all providing service. And I think that we've got an answer, we've got to have that question first, is that regardless of whether it's a crime that happened, or whether or not, you know, somebody calls and says, I hear a bump in the night, and you get over there and it's a squirrel in the attic, we still need to be there to respond. That's what people pay taxes for, and that's the service we're providing. So that's where we're, that's where we're going and shooting for the calls for service, because that is, that is going to be there anyway. So if you plot it out here, what this is, is this looks way different than the chart that you've got in yours, but it's a totality of taking the three years and putting them together. But you've got to realize that, look at Bonterra with 625 houses noted here, it's inherently going to be high on that service need over there because it's got a high, doesn't mean that Bonterra's riddled with crime, it means that you've got a higher number of people there, so it's a higher service volume area, if that makes sense. So skipping through on this one, this is incident reports. Now, the same thing can be said, for the most part, on that, is that not all incidents are bad things, but a difference between a call for service versus an incident is this. For an example, a call for service may be, hey, there's somebody suspicious. I don't normally see this guy in the neighborhood, and I want y'all guys to come out and check him out. Okay, we get out there and it might be Jerry, and he's waiting on Marcus to pick him up to give him a ride to the Starbucks. Everything's great. Or call for service, so we go out there to the neighborhood, and the guy that we find in the neighborhood is waiting on another guy that's in a house doing a drug deal, and there's a pound and a half marijuana in the backseat. Two different things, but one of them's going to wind up with a whole lot of paperwork, an incident. A crime has been committed, or something of major significance has happened to where it needs to be documented for future reference. A natural death investigation, we handle a lot of those around town. We do a report on a natural death because it's a significant event that future reference, somebody need, may need to come back and say what happened to Chase whenever they was found over here in David's basement. So we got to figure out, did he die from natural causes later on? We need to document that so that later on, somebody's not trying to come back and, and try to figure out what happened five years ago or 10 years ago. So looking through this, we did the same type thing. We went through the incidents, and then it's mislabeled at the top on my chart here, calls for service by unit should be incident by unit. Did the same thing, went back through, you've got some bar graphs on, on your paperwork that you're going to bring in, similar type expectation. Bonterra 625 shows to be your higher one, Taylor Glen right beside all it, but you've got 625 people there, 625 residential units. So you're obviously going to be higher frequency than what you're going to have at COPUS, at 204 residential units. So let me go back to answer this question now, because this is the longest I've taken. I've taken a long time sometimes to answer a question, but this is one of the longest ones. The end of the day is, not necessarily would you have a higher frequency of call for service. Right now, you're running a 94% occupancy rate at one of your apartment complexes at COPUS, and 96% occupancy rate at Flagstone. The one-bedroom rent at COPUS, $1,103, Flagstone, $1,050. Two-bedroom rent, COPUS, $1,388, Flagstone, $1,200. Three-bedroom, COPUS has eight units. They didn't have a price available at the time, $1,300 at Flagstone. You've got two apartment complexes, and they're 94, 96% full. I'd say there's room for expansion on that, from my opinion. Up to what level, I don't know. There again, that's up for you guys to balance out because you don't want to get past that level. Because when you get past that level and you've got extra inventory, is where we're going to have problems because the ice cream shop's got to give the special, the tire shop gives the special, the doughnuts, the free doughnuts at the gas station, apartment complex managers got to give the special. They're going to start letting people to get away with things that they wouldn't normally let them get away with. When we had one apartment complex here in town, years ago, I can remember the economy having such a effect on how it was managed that we could see that effect out here on the street. And I give you the example of the loud music, things like that. When times were great and there were people constantly waiting to get in there, if we were out there, the next morning, I got an email or a text from the girl that managed the place wanting to know what type of call we had over there. And if it was, hey, you know, somebody called in complaining on David with his loud music, she would text me back and say, you won't have that problem again, and David wouldn't be over there next week when we got over there. Meaning that she knew she had a long list of people to get on there, and she knew she had a product with a capacity inventory that was only here, and she had a lot more customers waiting in line, so she could be very selective about the people she had in there. The more we add on, the less those managers are going to have of that, if that makes sense. So one of the lists I've got up here is just some recommendations from us, is what is our current inventory of available apartments that's been approved in Indian Trail? Not the number of different developments, but total number of apartments that are available. Add that to your current inventory that's already here, so you take one and two and add them together, come up with a number. Then you've got to find a true number of potential apartments desired by Indian Trail consumers, how many customers you've got coming here that wants an apartment. Then my suggestion is this, and this is Chase and Chase only, and I don't speak for anybody when I say this, but I'd subtract 200 from that. You subtract 200 from that, you always keep it competitive. You always make it to where there's a list of people waiting to get in, to where they can keep that standard up there. But then, you guys figure out a way that you can maybe work with your attorney and with Rocks, in future approvals, you've got to get creative in, when are these people going to build this stuff? I mean, a lot of us have sat here, a lot of you have sat here and seen a lot of things on paper over the years. But really, I mean, they spend all this time to get in here, when are you going to build this thing? And if you're not realistic going to go build it anytime soon, let us know that, so that we can make a decision for somebody else. But at the end of the day, is there a way that you can come up and say, okay, I give you approval to build something, but it's like a building permit that the county issues, if you don't push dirt in 12 months, or you don't show back up in 12 months with a, with a plan, and then 24 months, you've got bulldozer out there on site, then your permit's gone. So, you know, can you be creative in, in, you know, future approvals and putting some restrictions on people to where you don't leave a council 10 years from now? One of these approvals, I think, is, that's already by right, one of them's Patrick, 14 years old. By right, I think one of them's about 14 or 15 years old on one of these by right apartment things. I mean, that's a long time for it to be.
Yes, down center in Chris Mark, they go back.
So you're looking at 14 years ago, people were sitting in your seats, made a decision, and now you're sitting here. Can't make a decision on the next guy standing up where I'm at, who's frustrated with you. And they can't be frustrated, or they shouldn't be frustrated with you because you're hinging on a decision that was made 15 years ago when you were watching TV somewhere else, you know? If that makes any sense at all, how can you stop that repetitive cycle so that you can get more of a handle on what's coming in the pipeline? Because we know what might be coming, but if all these places went out here today and built apartments, how many is that? Is that too many? Is that not enough? Are they going to build it? I ain't going to build it. I mean, that's a, that's kind of a question that, that I don't even know if you'll get the right answer from, but you know, look at those, look at creative ways that you can put, you know, some type of timeframe on there to where you can get a better handle on what you've got coming. And then you've got to obviously revisit that every couple of years to, to get an idea about what your inventory is, and, and what you've got available to you. But, you know, we've got, I've got a couple of things that I, I left in there on the, on the attachment that I gave you, you know, a couple of articles, and I'll just read from a, a 2003 article. A highlight says, to truly compare crime rates, you have to compare between apartments and single-family houses, the officer should have to count each household in the apartment community as the equivalent of a single-family house separately. So that's the, that's the formula that we used, because we tried to, tried to give you something that was going to be a little bit meat and potatoes to it. And then the second one that I've got you, is a Hobart police chief was commenting on, on apartment complexes, and then the appearance of crime at apartment complexes may be sometimes higher because of the rash of things like car break-ins. But just like a mall parking lot, or just like a Walmart that we were talking about earlier, Marcus, you've got more opportunity for criminals and more opportunity for crime to happen when you've got that many cars parked out front. So you've got an apartment complex, or you've got a Walmart where people know there's going to be 300 cars at. It gives an opportunity for, you know, a thief that's coming in here to break into cars in the middle of the night, they can just go there. It's like going to the candy store. You know, some of the, some of the things that we've run into in the past at a couple of our apartments that we currently have, or at least one that we had in the, you know, an older, older one here in town, is parking. You know, you guys hear all the time from, from me, and Rocks hears from me, and, and the planners do, whenever we get a site planner review for something, talking about quality of life things, and making sure driveways are long enough to get the average vehicle in, making sure, you know, streets are wide enough so Johnny and them can get their trucks that are, that are wide down through there. So we talked about doing things like the parking ordinances and things like that, but we all know the reality is, there are places in town that you take that parking ordinance and throw it away, you still can't park on the street because it's so, so narrow. They were allowed years ago, or maybe they were built and annexed in or something, but they're just not up to the standard of what we, we may want now, or need now. But the fact is, is that, you know, they're there. And so we've got to figure out the same things with these apartments and future apartments. But I have seen before, and we have gotten calls for service in the past, during a particular time in the economy and the way things were being managed, one of the apartment complexes here in town basically gave you, gave you the ability to park one vehicle in their lot. And so if I went over to your house to watch Super Bowl, I'd park next to the curb, or park here, or park over there. The next thing you know, they had a signed agreement with a tow company that would patrol or ride their parking lot. I come out after the Super Bowl, belly full of nachos, and look up and car ain't there. And it happened a lot. And it happened to a lot of people that were paying good money to live in those apartments. Because they would get home from their second shift job tired, and David's having a party, and half of Indian Trail's over there, so they park next to the curb. And they go inside and go to bed, and they wake up, and they come out, and their car's gone. And then they got to pay a tow bill where they were already paying for the housing at that place. So you know, we want to create an environment, whenever we give approval on stuff, I would hope to where we don't have situations like that. I'd rather have more parking than needed than, than to have too little, if that makes sense. Because the last thing that I think any of us want is for a legitimate resident of our town not to be able to park their car when they get home from work. If that makes sense. But Patrick's got a few things, as far as amenities and things like that, to talk to you guys about. I won't have a seat over here to the side, but certainly available for Johnny to answer any questions from the back there that y'all have.
Thank you, Chase. I, I, keeping up with apartments in Charlotte, Gary Evans and I, we, we got on the light rail one day, and we drove the light rail all the way from Pineville all the way to UNCC. And you could see the 27,000 units that they're planning on, on building along the alignment. Many of those apartments right now, they provide all these amenities that you're looking at. A lot of these amenities do not, do not exist in a single-family subdivision. You might have the common park, you might have the clubhouse. There are many, many items out there that they're available in an apartment complex that they're not in a single-family dwelling. In addition to, I think the, the main task that council gave us, it was a question is, where do we draw that line? How do we decide how many more apartments we need to approve? So excellent questions. The, the purpose of the exercise is to come up with some data that council could make a decision and feel that it's a good, good judgment. So in addition to the data, the last slide that I'm going to share with you, right now, whether it's an apartment complex or a single-family dwelling, or a condo, we try as much as I can, we can, Rocks, myself, Todd, is to look at the aesthetic. We, we get involved with, with the building material on the, on the outside or inside. Affordable housing, if they do exist, we want to make sure that do not exist in a single geographical area because experience showed that, that area becomes deteriorated if there are four apartment complexes next to each other. Culture and leisure has to be there, demographic, demographic, we've, I've exchanged information with council about the millennials. And when you look at the percentage, percentages that we came up with, you could see that our millennial population does not have a chance really to survive that percentage, it's so small within our community. We look at the economy, it has a lot to do with it, you know, they look at apartment rent, leases, gas prices, education. We've, we've heard on numerous occasions that the high school population is dropping in our community from demographic studies that were done. Chase elaborated a lot on, on his type of work, but Johnny's type, Johnny Blythe should be included, the U D O should be included, D O T should be included. It all contributes to that final product, whether it's an apartment or a single-family dwelling. One, one item I'd like to elaborate on, which is, just to follow up on what Chase said, an apartment complex of 250 units is managed right, you have one focal point, police and fire, they always know who they're communicating with. On the other hand, it's like Chase said, single-family subdivision is large, and you have 500 or 600 different tenants or residents living in that neighborhood. We got to keep the inter, intergovernmental agency relationship good, the land use, we, we do take advantage of all that stuff without going through all of them. We pay attention to all of them. Public, private participation has a lot to do with the final product, whether it's an apartment or, or a single-family dwelling. The regulations are there, resources, services, it has a lot to do with that apartment complex or that neighborhood, stormwater, taxes, and transportation. This is, this is what we came up with, taking the data that Chase shared with us. And this is generated by Excel. If you look at the big blue area, and look at the percentage down there, the total single, existing single-family dwelling right now is about 77%. The gray area also is a single-family, so that's about 9.99. If we add the two together, we're talking about 87% of our population right now is within single-family neighborhood. And if you look at the bottom corner with blue, that's single-family approved that we should be seeing soon. So I think the number that we're coming up with is about 90% of our residents, whether any type, it's single-family dwelling. What does that leave us with? You look at the percentages for townhomes and condominiums, and the apartments, if I add the entitled one, and the, the existing apartments, I'm coming up with 8%. So, right now, if right now, if we're looking at the millennials and the young generation, they're ready to leave home, to be on their own, work within Indian Trail, we're only offering them 2.69%. That percentage, and I know probably Rox, uh, agree with me on that one. That's a very low percentage within a jurisdiction. Uh, and if, if it does exist, like Chase said, that apartment complex might be very expensive for them. Uh, and then we, we need to figure out the jobs for them too. So to, we need to consider all these percentages and we need to, like Chase said, we could provide counsel by, uh, communicating with organizations that specialize in stuff like that and looking at different jurisdictions. We will be able to provide counsel where they could take, take that percentage and make, uh, a, a, a good judgment whether to approve an apartment complex or not. But looking at 90% right now and the rest is townhome and condominiums, none of these millennials getting out of high school or getting out of college, they're gonna be able to put 20% down payment on a condominium or, or, or a house. They're gonna be spending some times working trying to save some money to be able to do that. So what they're gonna do, they're gonna move to Charlotte, find another place in Charlotte where they could live and also they could work maybe because they can't find a job here in Indian Trail that Charlotte could provide. Without putting our jurisdiction down, I think we, we need to start thinking, our recommendation to council, whether it's Johnny, Chase, staff and myself, is we need to look at that percentage and adjust that percentage a little bit to allow some of the young generation to, to remain close to home uh, and be able to work, uh, in Indian Trail. But that percentage is really very, very low, uh, for apartment complexes. So if we add what's entitled, we'll end up with about seven or eight point something percent. Uh, I've looked at some numbers throughout the US. Uh, the minimum that you have in a community sometimes is about 15%. So right now, to finalize it, what we could do is we take some of this data, bring more information and then, uh, we could provide the final percentage and then on top of that, we have to look at different geographical area in, in the town. Uh, so we could locate them based on traffic, based on employment and come back to council and say, yes, this apartment complex, we feel that it, it, it should be approved or it shouldn't be approved and you guys make the final decision. But it was a long exercise, but I think we, we, we're getting somewhere and soon we should be able, between engineering, planning, Rox and economic development, we should be able to come back and, and say, here's a comfortable, comfortable percentage that we could work with. Mr. Mayor.
Patrick, this is great data. Um, but there's one bit that's being left out, that's being overlooked, those apartments. We came out of a massive recession and the inability to buy homes. And at the same time, many people lost their homes and these corporations have popped up that specialized in buying these homes. And many of our already established neighborhoods have more than 15 to 20% rentals in them. And I would bet my 28 years in the real estate business that out of that 20%, more than half of them are people that destroy the homes. The worst thing I do when I go show a home is a home that was previously rented. It's destroyed. Um, on my block alone, there were two homes that were rented for years, um, down a, a corner of Proverbs there. Um, Chase, your guys were out there pretty much every night with something going on. They became known as the, uh, local dealers. I'm not sure what really went on in that house. Eventually, the house did sell. Uh, the house next door to me was a rental for years and was just picked up and bought. And we cringed every time a new renter moved in. I would, I would think, and this is just an opinion, but people that live in apartments tend to take care of them a little bit better. They want their security deposit back. Uh, and they want a good recommendation for a home or another apartment they may be getting. But people that rent these houses from these corporations are dealing with a corporation and a call-in number that is sometimes on the other side of the country. They don't care. They don't care about their homeowner's dues. They don't care if their lawns are, are groomed. They're getting money from the renter. Soon as they move out, they have their own construction crew that goes in for pennies on the dollar, paints over, does shoddy work, gets the next, next renter in. They don't do background checks barely on them. Uh, so that, that's just food for thought. That's, uh, been trending upward. I can't remember, I think it's Rent America is one of the companies. And in the last 12 months in my neighborhood, over, I counted over 20 of them that were victims of the recession. Will this trend change? It always changes. Real estate changes. Eventually there'll be homes that are owned again. But for the next decade, these are gonna be, we're gonna have high rentals in our residential areas, which I think is far more detrimental than an apartment complex that's well managed with amenities as Patrick has shown. Not that we wanna have, uh, overabundance of apartments where they're competing and giving the drug dealer special one month. But just think about that information too as comparing, approving more residential versus multifamily versus putting restrictions in the ordinance if we can. Um, like covenants that only a maximum amount of rentals in a single-family residence can be allowed according to the town's standards. And I'll get off my soapbox. Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any questions from council?
I just have a couple of comments. Uh, it, it appears to me that we are, um, woefully short. I won't say woefully. We are short for, uh, apartments. When you're at, say, eight and a half percent, you know, um, sounds like, you know, on average, uh, we're, we're 50% of what the national average is. Um, I, I wanna take the, the single-family one step further. I'm, I'm 68 years old, okay? I have, um, uh, a daughter and a son-in-law who live in the same neighborhood I have. And then I have three grandsons. So my, my concern out of all of this is those grandsons will not stay here. There's nothing for them to be here. And we will end up being a bedroom community. And a bedroom community will end up being worse than you will ever realize. Um, I, I, I came from a, a small town that is, uh, is, is similar to this and, and they're aging out. Um, they're absolutely aging out and, and we all know what happens when that happens, so. I, I know that, that Jerry, I know that Gary, and I don't wanna take all the thunder away, but I, I know that they've been talking to millennials and I've talked to a few. Those are the people that we need. We need the young professionals. So whatever we do, we need to keep in mind, um, our target audience. As Patrick has shown, we need the right amenities, we need the right pricing, the rentals, so that we can keep our community thriving and we can, we can, with millennials, we will get the retails. We will, we will get the shopping centers. We will get, you know, we'll get what we're after. So I think our target audience going forward is millennials and to do that, we need more apartments. So we need to look at where we put them because we don't want them congregated in all in one area. But, but I really think that, that, you know, having seen this information, you know, my thought of apartments, I, I've always thought we needed more and, uh, to me, this just tells me that, 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 that we do. Uh, I, I think we do need to start down that path with, with what Chase and everybody's given us, um, and staff and really concentrate on where the, the right places are. And, and again, we've heard, you know, Sterling, uh, the prices were, what, 11, 13 and, and 15? The, the downtown is, is slightly above that. So I think those prices are targeted prices, so. Um, I'll get off my soapbox, but I do think that as a council, we, we need to take a look at increasing our, um, uh, apartment capacities.
Any further comment? No?
Oh, one other thing.
Yes, Mike.
The, the other key point here, and I, I had it written down. We've been hearing, I've been on the, I was on the planning board for a year and a half. So I've been coming to these for two years now, I guess, a little bit longer. A town that's growing this fast and our school population is dropping? What does that tell you? We're aging out.
Exactly. Are, are, are you finished?
I'm, I'm done.
Okay, go ahead Jerry.
Yeah, um, thank you, thank you Chase and Patrick. Um, you know, this was really a result of, we're having these conversations and we don't know where we are or where we're headed. And we needed some, we need a roadmap and I think this is a great step and there was some, um, some good observations that Chase made that I think we also need to be reviewing going forward. And that is, if we are gonna approve something, have a statute of limitation if there, if that's allowed by law. Um, especially on rezones and the whatnot. You know, we do have a couple of, by right apartment complexes out there sitting. They're just sitting. And yet we see that we have a need for some of the younger folks and the, the different demographics. But, you know, kudos, man. That was really, um, kind of a, we threw, we were, we were having our conversations and then we're kinda looking at each other like, well, what do we do now? And we dropped this on them and less than two weeks, you, you guys really, um, gave us some valuable information, so. Thank you so much.
Michael.
I just wanna make one comment and close. Chase, that was phenomenal. Very, very well, very well done Chase, Patrick. Um, I think Chase and council member had brought up two very good things. This is a great council. And you have to be visionaries. And we can raise the bar for the future and find the highest and best places for use of these apartments. Chase mentioned oversaturation. And just map out for the future areas that they serve best. And I don't see any better team than our staff and Patrick to map out the future for that. And I think that's something that I would, I would recommend to the council to start looking at. So we can get to where we set the standard higher for the future rather than lower. And thank you. Okay.
I cut out everything in the paper about apartments every time I see, see them and sometime I share them with other people. But just for a comment here, there's more than 1,100 uptown apartments that are vacant right now. And for now, however, the boom is still on with about 27,000 apartments planned or underway. And that was in, well, I guess the date's not on here. It isn't. It was recent though, yeah. There's another one about the apartments, but, and they're gonna move this way when they reach their saturation point in Charlotte. They're, they're coming this way, so we really have to have a plan somewhere out there to be prepared for this.
Let us go.
Just to be, uh, have a difference of opinion and I respect your opinion, all your opinions, I, I respect it. Um, and, and with apartments. And one of the things about apartments in Charlotte and apartments in Indian Trail, I remember when my son is, my youngest son's 36. And one of the most important things for him was to move near downtown Charlotte. And he wanted to move downtown, near downtown Charlotte because on Saturdays and Friday nights, he, he didn't wanna spend all that cab money, taking a cab back to, to wherever he was going because, you know, you go down, you have a good time, you had, smart enough to get a cab and you, and you go back. And, uh, and I respected that. I just kinda scratched my head when he told me that. But, but, um, and, and I respect, I really do. I respect what Mike said, what Shirley said. Uh, I did read an article about the 27,000 apartments and I think what they, what, what I saw is we're gonna be overpopulated with apartments for a short time and then you're gonna see a part, then you're gonna see them get, catch up after, uh, I have a little bit different point of view and, and, and which, which I think what makes us a good council. I personally don't mind having, living in a bedroom community. I, I like the fact that, that we live in a bedroom community. One of the, one of the things that we hear most about and we get the biggest complaints on traffic. Traffic, traffic, traffic. That's our number one complaint is traffic. You build more properties, you get a lot more traffic. You have a lot more headaches. Uh, and, uh, and I really don't mind a bedroom community. I, I, I like, uh, being, I like the fact that, hey, listen, we, we are getting a little older, we're, we're aging out, but since I've lived here, we've built movie theaters, we've got the Sun Valley District. We've got a lot of nice things that have come to town. It's not like, you know, that, that we're, we're losing anything. We're still get, we're still gaining on some of the nice things. But if, if, um, if I had to put up with, uh, I moved from the Valentine area, we lived in a townhome and I wouldn't, I wouldn't live there anymore. Uh, I mean, it, it, I, I would not like to fight that traffic that I have to fight. That those people have to fight on a continuous basis every day. It, it's horrible. Uh, you know, I like the fact that I, I can live in Indian Trail and, and maybe not fight it all the traffic that some of these people in, in Charlotte fight. Uh, I got a cousin real quick lives in Cali, Southern California. They have traffic at 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night. You get on the freeway and, and, and you can't move. You can't go anywhere. I can't imagine living like that. So I, I just have a little different point of view. The, the bedroom community doesn't, doesn't bother me. I kinda like that. I kinda think that's why we've grown as fast as we've grown is because we're a little different. You know, Indian Trail has a, as a whole, is a bedroom community and, and has low taxes. The more people you get in a town, the more your taxes go up. If, if, you know, I, I moved out of Charlotte and so many people move out of Charlotte or move out of Mecklenburg County and they moved to, to Union County because it's about the lowest tax rate as you can get. Indian Trail is phenomenal on how, on 18.5% tax rate is phenomenal. Considering, I think in Charlotte's 48, does anybody know 48 point something or? It, it's a lot. It, it, it's, it's a whole lot. So you do have your advantages. Uh, and, and I guess what I'm saying, I, I'm born and raised in Charlotte. And, you know, the more people you get in a town, that, I mean, it, it's a fact that the higher your tax rate goes. It just keeps going up and up and up. You gotta start paying for, for more things. But anyway, I, I didn't mean to get off on that tangent. I just have a little different of, of opinion. And, and I respect you guys' opinions and, and we'll, we'll do what's best, but.
Further discussion, we'll move on to the next item. Item B, open space. Mr. Sadek.
In previous meeting, uh, we, we brought before council the idea about developers dedicating, uh, part, uh, part of their developments, which is open space back to the town. Uh, we do have right now three of them, uh, out there on the list. And they're willing to give the open space back to the town. So, uh, what we could do with the open space, uh, just a simple thing like put trails in there that connect trails that the developer is building and bring him to the street or maybe connect him with other trails. So, uh, we, we wanted to bring back before council, let you know that there are three developers right now, they're offering that. And we wanted to get your input, uh, and give us direction. Should, should we, uh, go ahead and talk to the developer and, and, and kinda try to claim that, that, uh, open space or just leave it as is and let them know that we're not interested? So we just want some input from council.
Patrick, are you allowed to give the name of the developers?
Absolutely. I thought I do have them in a presentation, Michael. There, it was in the packet. We, we.
Are we talking about the one that, the new one over in Bonterre that? I'm, I'm thinking it's the, uh, was it, what is it? Bon, off Bonterre Parkway or whatever it is. When I know what it is, I just can't think of the name of the neighborhood.
Uh, and the other one is the one, uh, that we approved for Tommy Price. They, they have about foursome acres there.
That is, that's the one.
That's the one, okay. And there is the town center uptown, uh, by the apartment complex. There is some green area and open space there. They're willing to work with us if we wanna put any trails. And I can't remember the third item, Rox.
I think it's in the agenda packet is where I saw it. My apologies.
I'm sorry? Right. So if, uh, if, if council is, is interested in, in taking over these open spaces and maybe not do anything with them right now. But when we, when we have some funding in the future that we don't have right now, we could go ahead and do it at a later year or maybe, when we get the master plan, we should be getting the park master plan anytime soon. And when Jason received the surveys from the consultant, trails was one of the main important item. Also, Mecklenburg County, uh, about a couple of months ago, one of the items that they were lacking with, with parks and recs was trails. So, I think a trail is a simple, uh, uh, infrastructure item that it doesn't cost a lot of money. And it will allow us to tie all these open spaces together and maybe some parks together.
Mr. McIntyre?
Um, the cost to acquire that property is zero, right? We're not paying anything for it.
No, no cost to any of that.
So then, uh, I see no reason why we as the council, and I'm speaking for myself, but I'm also encouraging my fellow council members to acquire the property in the interim. Should we find available funding in the future, I think it's something that we could look at based on the survey from Jason that he gets back or the master plan. Kind of hopefully try and get that because if they want to do that, then that's fine, um, and then we take it from there.
Yeah, as, uh, David mentioned in the past, when we brought one, David made a good recommendations that asked the, the, uh, the developer if, if they could contribute putting the infrastructure there. But some of, some of them, they're not interested, they, they want to just give the land without putting any infrastructure. So these three pieces are out there, they're willing to work with us. So if council decide that we need to move forward with that direction, we, we'll go ahead and do so.
So no cost? We can sit on it, we would maybe have to cut grass.
That's correct.
The only thing. You know, to me, it's a.
No brain.
No brainer. Go ahead.
Okay. You know, I, um, I'm going to, I hate to be Mr. Negative.
Somebody has to be, right?
First of all, a developer's not going to give you any land if it's worth anything, uh, you know? If, if, if the developers, uh, got four acres and I, I don't know what, and, and if he, he's going to give you something he can't use, basically. And, and, and my idea behind that, and we talked about it and, and when I hear Jason and the parks come into it and we kind of talked about it and I thought we kind of put a squash to this at one time and, and maybe we didn't. But what, what worries me, Marcus and, and, and Mike is, is the fact that the developers don't want this land, they don't want to pay taxes on it. So they're going to get rid of it and they're going to give it to the town, so, so we don't have to pay taxes on it. But why don't we require them to do something with it? It's in their neighborhood, it, it, if they want to, and we're talking about parks, uh, or, or we're talking about the park, you know, the, the neighborhood I live in, we have several parks. But nobody, nobody, uh, the town didn't build those parks, the neigh- the developer built the parks. So if, if we're going to take this, we're going to bite on this free land thing from the developers. Then why, why don't we step back and say, wait a minute, why don't you do something with it? What we can, can we not, maybe we can't require them to, but we can ask them to do the same thing that we're going to spend our money. Yeah, we'll spend our money, uh, when I say our money, we're going to spend our taxpayers' money on, on a park or a trail or something that's an amenity for some, for a developer's neighborhood. So that's just my thought of it.
Can I?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, I am, I am not a, you're not being negative, first of all, that, that, that's a very good point. But, um, there's nothing wrong with us asking the developers as well to work with us on that. I think that's what Patrick was mentioning is some of them want to work with us, some of them don't and some of them may, um, do some certain aspects. I know that they will not give us, the developer wants to squeeze as many houses as they want, so they're not just going to give us four acres of prime land, we kind of aware of that. But what I'm saying is in the interim, if it costs us nothing to acquire it, we could and look at some other option. I mean, I think we have the greatest, the, the guy who writes the greatest grant in the world, that could probably, we could probably do something. I understand we don't want to develop it for the neighborhoods because it's kind of adding an amenity for the developer so that his residents can use at no cost to him. All he did was just give us unusable land for housing, so to speak. But it's something that I think that we can explore. I don't know how we can compel other, um, future developers who come to us with, um, various projects to, um, to, we can't force them. But I think if we establish a good working relationship in terms of we vote on the, the product on its merits, you know? You know, it meets all the standards within the town and then we could look at that. And if it's something where we feel as a council, this current council as constituted or future ones can decide, hey, you know what, we don't want to do that and we're not going to spend any, any money. Anything that we do, we still have to vote on it, right? Can't do anything right now, so, I mean, but that's just my opinion.
I agree, and one, that's some good points. The one thing I'd like to say, do, do they not pay taxes on it, that, do, do the?
Yes.
I mean, it, so basically what they're doing is, it is not a, a total, uh, I mean, what they're doing is they're, they're not wanting to pay taxes on it and they're giving it to you. You know, it's kind of like you, you're making a car payment on a car that you're not using. So you, you give it to somebody and you say, you make the car payment, basically is exactly what you're doing in that, in that instance. And, um, uh, so, so they're giving it to us so they don't have to pay us, so they don't have to pay, and I'll say, uh, so they don't have to pay taxes on it. And in turn, leaving it up to us to do and to build something in, in their neighborhood that they're, that, that we, I would prefer to see them do. So anyway, that's just my, my deal.
Go ahead, Mr. Hatt.
Okay, that, that makes total sense on both sides. So the compromise may be, let's be selective. Be selective, let's let the staff go out and look at it and determine if, if there's something that is of use or future use, um, that, that we take a look at. If, if it is something that, you know, it's just, you know, never would be used, then we pass on it.
And we let them pay taxes.
So I, I think we just look at it on a one-on-one basis and at the same time.
If I, if I may, just to take, for example, Tommy Price's development, uh, he, he said to me and, and Rocks, we, uh, you have a from now until HOA is developed, then they're going to, if the, the town doesn't move forward unless they take the piece, HOA will take it. And then HOA will decide what to do with it if, uh, we, they could do something with it. But so there is an option later on that HOA could come in and take over and do something with that parcel. But that, that, that's another case that will happen two or three years from now. But David, you're absolutely right in regard to the tax and, and the piece that probably is not usable by him.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying it's, it's, it's an unusable piece of property that they're not wanting to pay taxes on, so that, that's, they're, they're giving it to us. So giving it to us to, to make an amenity for their neighborhood. So something to make their nice, make their house value go up. So that's just, that's my idea of it. And, and you could take it by, on a base, on a per basis, but you're still doing the, you're still doing the same thing, that, you know?
Yeah, a lot of good points. Um, this, this open space, the little bit of acreage doesn't necessarily mean we have to turn it into a park or we have to improve it or, or any of that. It could just sit there and be what it is, trees, you know, just living, breathing something there to, to help break up the communities from each other. And yeah, I, I understand that perhaps they, they want to avoid paying taxes. But the, the town or the taxpayers are not going to be footing a bill for that either, we'll just be losing what, a little bit of tax money on vacant land. Again, I, I don't think we necessarily want to take every piece that's offered, perhaps somebody's trying to pawn off some swamp land, that's going to be, now you're dealing with stormwater issues and, and then it does become a taxpayer burden. But I, I don't think we should close the door on that, we, we just don't necessarily need to go and spend money to develop it or, or be smart, you know, when we do. But good points, gentlemen, ladies.
So, I understand here, council wants Patrick and staff to go back and do more research on each piece of land and then cherry pick? So to say, figuratively speaking?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, is that a consensus?
Yes, well, I say yes.
Okay, it looks like the majority.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that brings us to item C, new format for committee member applications, Mr. Sadek.
Mr. Mayor, just so quickly, we, we took the old applications, we add a couple more items to it just to, so we could draw, uh, uh, let's say qualified committee members. The two items that we added, certifications and professional experience and that will, will allow us to do better selection when we have so many members for any of the committees that we have. That's a quick item right there, so that's completed and it was in your package.
Any questions for Patrick? Thank you. That brings us to item D. One job position title change, Mr. Sadek.
Yes, sir, quickly on that one, too, uh, with the adopted budget, we did have one extra, uh, position, engineering position, a roadway engineer. And we're, uh, we're in the process of hiring someone right now, uh, our projects, you know, are in the preliminary engineering. We did lose our procurement officer, uh, Amanda Smith, that she, she passed her bar exam and she selected to work for an attorney, uh, down in Charlotte. So what I'm proposing right here, rather than, and, and her responsibility in regard to bonds, insurances was about maybe 10, 15% and the rest contracts. What I'm proposing is for the same amount of salary is rather than hiring a procurement officer, we could hire another, another engineer and both of them, they could do contracts. So if we ever lose one or we get busy, they could exchange information. So we're only as, asking council to allow us to change the title and have the same budget for that position that Miranda used to have.
Any questions?
What is the title change?
The title we're looking at right now, civil engineer slash contract administrator. So whoever is going to apply for the job will be, will continue to do procurement, uh, contracts and, uh, and sureties and bonds. No impact to the budget or anything like that. If council is okay with that, we could go ahead and advertise for that position.
Does that approve that or no?
No, this is, I mean, that's, that's, uh, something that we could approve, I just want to counsel to know because that will change the title on the organizational chart that you guys approved. So if you see that change and you're okay with it, we'll go ahead and proceed with advertising for the position.
Any other questions for Patrick? No, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
That brings us to FTA CATS pilot program.
The last item is, we've been approached by CATS. We, uh, we met CATS about a year ago, I remember Mrs. Howe, myself and Gary Evans and Rocks. We went to CATS and we, we had some questions about the light rail, extending the light rail to Indian Trail. They approached us last week, uh, what they're trying to do, they're looking into light rail projects that starts in Belmont and ends up somewhere here in Indian Trail. So they are connecting the Silver Line with the Airport Line and extending it to Belmont. Simply what they're asking us is, uh, they're trying to get $800,000 study, funding for a study from the federal government, which is the FTA, Federal Transit Administration. And it does not cost us a penny, all what they're asking is that each jurisdiction will contribute certain hours, uh, during, uh, the study when the feds approve the $800,000. So, uh, we just wanted to update, uh, council and it's a combination of different staff, Rocks will be involved, Michael, myself and the engineers. So no monetary contribution, it's only in-house hours by staff. And they are, in order for them to get the funding, we had to fill out the application, if we get the funding, we will participate in the study. I just wanted to update, uh, council with that. Any question in regard to the task?
Patrick, would they connect us to the airport?
Yes, ma'am, that's, this one will go, uh, like Indian Trail, downtown, through downtown, all the way to the airport, air, from the airport to all the way to Belmont.
Oh, that's great.
So we just wanted to update council on that task.
That's just an update?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, there's a motion.
It says there's a motion to approve?
So, Patrick, um, it says 27,670 or 620 hours.
Right.
Who's, who's, uh, um, rate is that based off of?
It's based on the staff that they're going to be involved in this, uh, exercise, which is, uh, Mike Parks during the initial process. Rocks when it comes to zoning and station area around the, 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 the light rail stations. Myself, because of my experience with the first South, uh, South Light Rail Corridor, who else, we had Michael in a spreadsheet.
Todd in engineering, Adam in public works and Mr. Evans in economic development.
So combination of everything, so that way when we discuss stations and infrastructure, everybody will have an input.
And that, and it's going to get capped at that 28,000, basically?
I'm sorry, sir?
The, the effort will be capped at the, the $28,000 value?
Yes, sir, in hours, in hours.
You don't, do you need that approved or is that just?
There's a motion.
Yeah, go ahead, there's a motion on the agenda, go ahead.
I'm making a motion to approve the town mini-trails match commitment for the Federal Transit Administration study consisting of time participation from town staff valued at $27,670 or 620 hours.
Cones made the motion, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, that brings us to discussion items, item A, Unionville Indian Trail Road West and Sardish Church Road Roundabout, Mr. Sadek, there's.
Uh, yes, sir, I think, uh, we, we have, uh, we're asking council to vote on both of them, but they're the same project. We came to council, uh, Todd, I would say maybe four or five months ago in regard to the infrastructure and the utilities. And, and then the additional 15,000 was additional char- charge to investigate where the utilities underground were, right? So on the first, uh, on the first item, so we have to update the ordinance based on that change. Not a lot of people, I, I myself am not used to this process that, that you have to go back and update the ordinance, I, I could have Jim add to that. But, uh, it's, it's sort of like a change order. And when you're running to change orders, you continue having them and absorbing within the budget until it gets to a point that you're over budget. As of now, this is a very significant item, we're not over budget, but we're following the procedure that we use here in Indian Trail by going updating the ordinance, correct, Jim?
Okay, so there, is there a question? So there'll be two, you'll need two motions?
So I'm, I'll make the first motion. I want to make a motion to approve the capital project ordinance number 293 for Unionville, Indian Trail Road West and Sardish Road, Sardish Church Road Roundabout.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion, all in favor? That would be unanimous.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the budget amendment for the capital project ordinance 293 in the amount of 45,412.
Mr. Morse made the motion to approve the budget amendment, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to your manager's update, Patrick, do you have one for tonight?
Yes, sir, a couple of items, uh, you've seen out there that the foundations are complete for the Veterans Memorial, we continue to get some donations. We will update council, uh, soon about the spreadsheet and the lump sum that we have. The trail back here that connect Old Town Hall with New Town Hall, we've already cut it. And Adam should be beginning on that probably within two to three weeks. So that will connect this entire area to the uptown area and council approved that budget, uh, a couple of months ago. Crooked Creek Phase, uh, no, actually Crooked Creek Phase Two, we, we're waiting on that, uh, park study to come in and then we're going to jump on the conceptual plan. We're planning on doing that in-house to save some money. And, uh, we're waiting on Scott Call to do the analysis for the signalized intersection uptown. And I think that's in Chestnut Parkway Phase Three. And I think that's in Chestnut Parkway Phase Three. It is, uh, right now, the consultant is moving on, uh, trying to wrap up the environmental process, right, Todd? And, uh, our attorneys, Kevin and Karen, they're helping us, uh, complete First Avenue, the first phase, actually acquiring the properties for the, uh, for First Avenue Phase, uh, One. And surveying on Indian Trail was supposed to be completed a couple of weeks ago, but they assured us that it will be completed the end of this week. And as soon as we get the engineer on board, uh, that's his responsibility to start working on our project. Any questions from council?
No, okay, that brings us to council comments, Karen.
Mr. Head.
Oh, first, okay. Um, one thing that, that we, you know, in our consent agenda, I just want to bring up is that if my calculations are right, is that, uh, for this past year, we collected ninety-nine point eight-six percent of our taxes. That's, that is strong. That is very strong. And I think it needs to be pointed out. Our staff does a good job. NC DOT, um, I think it, I think it would be nice if we had, you know, a, a list of the transportation projects. And, and the, uh, update them as, as, as needed if something changes. Um, just like, you know, we're starting on this one. But I think it's important to, for us as a council and, and our residents to understand what all we really have going on in terms of, um, transportation projects. Economic development. Gary, thanks. You know, thanks for your hard work. Now let's just bring them to fruition. PIRs. I, I, I think what we started down this path was, we did today what, exactly what I was hoping that we would do is that, and, and I wanna thank, um, Mike Parks for establishing the difference between the normal requests that we get, that, that we want our residents to continue. But the, the reason I wanted to put PIRs out there is to, is to get a, uh, understanding of, of what is being asked. Um, and it's already been said, but I think it, it, uh, it needs to be said again. You know, um, the, the breakdown of cost, as Patrick said, for, for this Brandon Oaks, um, deal, he gave us an estimate. For him to do a complete cost would have cost money to do that. And as David said, you know, we, we weren't gonna set a precedent by, by doing this. So I, I, I think what we're, what we're doing is, is making sense. And I, I'll close with this, is that, again, you know, thanks to, to Chase and, and to Patrick for the information on apartments. I think it's opened eyes as to, as maybe we need to do, um, look at apartments. We need to make sure we, we, we have them in the right place. We're already looking at some downtown, we're looking at some out here. So, you know, within, within the framework of, of the council, we just need to, to look at, um, how we take this information and put it to good use. And the other thing with that, um, I think that, that somehow, some way, we need to get more input from, from our millennials to see what, how we can keep them, you know, again. When I look at my kids, or grandkids, they're ten, fifteen years away. But I wanna be able to, to be able to, to, to attract the right population and the right percentage of population so that we continue to grow as a town. With that, um, I think everybody's coming. It's been a long, long, long meeting. As always, thanks staff and everybody drive home safely. Thank you.
Mary Alvarez.
Mike pretty much said it all. Again, Chase, Patrick, that presentation was phenomenal. Mike, thanks for clarifying the PIRs and doing it so clear. Hope everyone's enjoying their summer. Just a reminder that our all-year-round schools have started up school again yesterday. So if you live in the Sun Valley area, um, Shiloh's back in school, watch out for the children. And, um, other than that, have, continue to have a great summer and God bless.
Mr. McIntyre.
Um, thank you. Um, I wanna take a minute, actually, actually, I wanna yield my time. We have before us here, Mr. Davis, who's a, uh, Mr. Stephen Davis, who's a, um, candidate for, um, county commissioner. And for us as a town to have somebody attending here, I think, I'd like to give him my time so that he can, um, address us or address those watching at home. I yield my time to him.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Mr. Mayor, Council, Staff, thank you so much for your time. I, like, uh, Councilman McIntyre said, I'm Stephen Davis. I am running for county commission. But a little bit about me, I live here in Indian Trail. I am one of your constituents and I appreciate the things that you do. That it is a thankless job, what you do, and it's not lost on me. So, uh, I'd like to say thank you publicly. Additionally, I wanna tell you that I spent nine years in the Air Force. I lived in Germany, I lived in Arizona, I lived in Texas. I'm originally from Stanley County, Norwood. I chose to live here because I love this community. I think it is the best community that it, that we can make it. And we continue to make it better, you continue to make it better. The, some of the things that I heard tonight, uh, did not concern me. It got me forward-thinking. And I like some of the things, a lot of the things I heard, um, about the light rail, about, uh, apartment, apartment living, about how, what Mr. Head said about, uh, how to get millennials to live here. I know my son is twenty-one. He didn't start driving until he was seventeen, wasn't really interested. My daughter's twenty-five. She, she didn't start driving until she was twenty, she wasn't interested. I think with the, with pu, public transportation becoming more prevalent here in Indian Trail, apart, the millennials will wanna stay. I think that's gonna help them want to stay here. And I think that's gonna bring them, bring more of them to our community. More of those hard-working millennials that will take the light rail to Charlotte, to the big banks to go to work. Because they don't care anything about driving. It's too far to ride a bike, but not too far to take the train or the bus. So if we can work with Charlotte Area Transit to make sure that we've got more public transportation and get them from here to there, I think that'll be beneficial. Like I said, I am running for county commission and I don't know what the future holds, but I, what I do hope is to continue to work with you, either as a commissioner or as just a resident. I'll be available to you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One second, Karen, did you wanna say anything, Mac?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Morse.
Thank you, Mr. Morse, for yielding your time back to Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. It's our pleasure to have you here tonight, for sure. And good luck this, this fall. Mr. Evans, Gary, that's, good job, buddy. You know, that was kinda development we're looking for. So, I mean, I just can't add to that. I'm just really impressed, um, every meeting. Ms. Fieldman, thank you for joining the Transportation Committee. I read your application, it was excellent, you're very well-qualified. I know you're gonna be a, an asset to the committee and I'm sure Todd's gonna enjoy having you. Everyone that came out regarding the super street, you know, that spoke out about it and, and your concerns, hopefully, you know, NC DOT heard him and didn't just, wasn't just lip service. You know, that it is out of our, out of our control somewhat. There's some things we can, we can't control. Maybe we can, if we do decide to, to fund it or contribute to it, that, um, maybe we can encourage them to mitigate some of the issues that are being brought up by the residents. So we'll, we'll see where that goes. Um, I think Mr. Stein is in attendance tonight. He was our grand marshal of the Fourth of July Parade. I don't know if he's left or not, but someone's hiding behind the podium. I'm not sure if that's Jim or Mr. Stein. But anyways, he left a little earlier and I was glad, glad to see him. He was the, he owned the pharmacy for quite some time here in Indian Trails. It's like a landmark. But anyways, thank you all for coming out tonight and you'll have a great week.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank y'all for coming. Appreciate you being here.
And Ms. Howe.
Wow, I can't match that one.
That was short.
I spoke enough tonight. Thank you, Margaret, for, for doing your, as you said, man.
Yes, Margaret, thank you. We're, you're here every meeting. You had two cars tonight, right, your husband? Yes, yes. That's the way to keep a happy marriage. Again, thanks to the staff. I'm just glad to be here and the person who's so glad that I'm here is my husband. Since, uh, I, we, we've been in the house quite a few days together here and he's not able to drive or anything. He's coming along fine and we appreciate all the prayers. Several other people have told me today, they, they're holding him in prayer. So you never can get enough of that and I thank everybody for that. It was a great meeting, by the way. These are nice guys to work with, really, in spite of what you hear about them. And Karen, of course, we acknowledge you, there's Karen. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. I am, there are actually good news tonight. We don't have a closed session, do we? We do, it's not in my packet.
Two quick items.
It's not in my packet?
They're always closed.
All right. We're gonna go in a closed session for items, I have no idea.
Jim, I need to see you.
Let me see your form.
It is, uh, real, uh, legal advice on both of them. So, um, to protect their attorney-client privilege on two topics.
What Karen said? So, yeah, well, she, she covered it, that's fine, right? That's fine, Karen covered it. I need a motion to go in a closed session.
Motion to go in a closed session.
McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor? Motion to come out of closed session?
Motion to come out of closed session.
Mr. McIntyre made the motion, all in favor?
Yep.
That would be unanimous, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Mr. Head, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.